Counselor Bowman, Perkins, Agustin?
Here.
Councilman Questa?
Here.
Councilman Jacas? Councilman Grover? Councilman Keenan?
Here.
Councilman Sedano?
Here.
Councilman Galman?
Here.
Councilman Maza?
Here.
President Gonzalez?
Here. This is a regular conference of the City Council as incorporated in the annual meetings notice of 2012, which was filed in the City Council's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 27, 2011, and sent to the Starleisure and Home News Tribune in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law of New Jersey. I will now open the public speaking portion of the meeting. Any taxpayer resident wishing to address the City Council may do so at this time. Once again, any taxpayer resident wishing to address the City Council may do so at this time. Seeing done, I close the public speaking portion of the meeting. We'll move on to new business.
Letter dated September 13, 2012, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to First Priority Emergency Vehicles, Inc., Manchester, New Jersey for two each 2013 ambulance chassis remounts and refurbishment in an amount of $219,500.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 13, 2012, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Ditchman, Flemington, Ford, Flemington, New Jersey for the purchase of vehicle parts and repairs for various departments for the period September 11, 2012 through April 10, 2013, in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 13, 2012, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Rico USA, Inc., Timebrook, New Jersey, for the leasing of new photocopiers for the period of September 1, 2012 through August 13, 2013, in the amount not to exceed $75,000.
Any comments?
Letter dated September 13, 2012, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Cleveland Auto Tire Company, Elizabeth, for tires and tubes for Public Works, Police, and Fire Department vehicles for the period September 10, 2012 through September 10, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $500,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 14, 2012, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Guardline Fire and Safety, Elmwood Park, New Jersey, for the purchase of personal protection items and equipment for the period September 10, 2012 through June 30, 2013, in the amount not to exceed $40,000.
Any comments? Counselman Maza?
What kind of protection we getting from this $40,000? Because apparently there looks like there's another, the next couple pages, for another $50,000, almost the same coverage, same item, personal protection item or equipment for firefighters, and this is for the personal protection equipment with Godline Fire? What kind of protection we getting? Is that insurance protection? Is that some new tools that we have?
This is equipment, as far as I understand, Councilman. And the, both recommended contracts are not duplicate, so we're asking for separate equipment for each.
No objection, thank you.
Any other comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 14, 2012, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Motorola Solutions, Inc., Wharton, New Jersey, for the purchase of portable radios and accessories for Fire Department at a cost of $323,000.
Any comments? Counselman Maza?
Again, are we purchasing a new radio? Are we upgrading the system? Or all the radio got melted in the fire someplace, that we're purchasing again?
I don't have the letter in front of me, but I'm going to go off of memory on this one. The amount of the money represents grant money from NuWasi that we have to spend by year's end.
Right.
And we're working on a global solution, which we're required to do in terms of upgrading our equipment.
Okay.
This is upgrading our radios.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Letter dated September 14, 2012, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to firefighter one, Sparty, New Jersey, for the purchase of personal protection items and equipment for the period September 10, 2012 through June 30, 2013, in the amount not to exceed $50,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 14, 2012, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to ESI Equipment, Porcham, Pennsylvania, for the purchase of police and homeland security equipment and supplies for the period of September 13, 2012 through April 30, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $40,000.
Any comments?
Yeah, question. What is this contract to with ESI? And what is different than what the equipment our police department has at the present time that we need to have special for police for homeland security equipment?
Councilman, if you'd like, I'll get you a breakdown of what each request is.
Okay. No problem, thank you.
Any other comments?
Put them on.
Put it on.
Letter dated September 14, 2012, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the renewal of insurance with Hartford Insurance Company through the agent of record Hughes Plummer Associates, Somerville, New Jersey, covering auxiliary police officers for the period July 1, 2012 to June 30, 2013, and an annual premium of $310.
Any comments?
I think it's something nice that we do for the auxiliary police. This department should be expanded as possible to get most of our young people involved. You know, we have so many talented high school kids in our city. I'm happy to see that this program is back and works. As many years ago, I remember, if it wasn't for the auxiliary police, you know, it would have been really detrimental to our city. So we have a good group of young kids. I hope we could upgrade in this number even either what we have.
Yeah. That's only really, I think this is a good thing. I mean, I don't know. I mean, how are they used? When are they used? I don't see much of them, so. I don't know how many there we do have. You wouldn't know.
I don't know off the top of my head.
You can find out for us.
Absolutely, sure.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, put it on.
Letter dated September 14, 2012, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the proper city officials to issue a vitality. Officials bond with the Hartford Insurance Company through agent of record Hughes Plummer Associates, Somerville, New Jersey, covering Paul Lesniak, City Treasurer, Tax Collector, at an annual premium of $1,750.
Any comments?
Mr. President, I see in the remaining package, when I was on the insurance commissioner many years ago, I think we had one big package that cover everybody that it felt like under this kind of protection. You know, we have apparently, you know what I mean, we have like the tax assessor or the treasurer, then we have the judges, and then we have people working in a court, and then we have people working, let's say, with the ambulances and things like that. I don't know who sits on the board of the...
I do. I think they come up at different times during the year. There may be different bonds for different officers.
That's correct, Councilman.
Right?
Yeah. Because when I came in tonight, I had a stack this much of the insurance requests, and I usually get like three or four a month. So it could be that they're, I don't know specifically the answer to your question, but it could be that they occur at other times during the year.
The reason I'm saying that, if you present all this at once to a particular company for a bid, I'm sure it would be probably much cheaper to give whatever maximum liability or minimal liability than this guy comes up now and you have to spend $1,750. Somebody else comes on and around, you have to spend another two, three. If you combine together at the beginning of the fiscal year this year to whatever number they mention of it, to 2013 fiscal year, it's like they're covering on a yearly basis, wouldn't that be more wise and less costly if they cover for a period, let's say, of the term of the mayor or the councilman or larger as an example, for those people that would remain ineffective, you know, working for the city? Something to look into with insurance.
Sure. Mr. Travis Hall, would you explore that, please? Any other comments?
That's it. Put it on.
Letter dated September 14, 2012, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute contracts for professional services with Union Square Medical Associates, Elizabeth, covering medical services for fire, police, and city employees for the period September 1, 2012 to August 31, 2013, at an amount not to exceed $95,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 14, 2012, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the proper city officials to approve the policy of insurance with Western Surety Bond Company of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, through agent of record Hughes Plummer Associates, Somerville, New Jersey, covering municipal court judges and the entire municipal court personnel for the period September 1, 2012 to September 1, 2013, at an annual premium of $1,565.
Any comments? All right, put it on.
Letter dated September 14, 2012, from the Business Administrator requesting that your honorable body consider authorizing the issuance of insurance with Evanston Insurance Company, Deerfield, Illinois, through agent of record Outer State Insurance Agency, Angola Coast, New Jersey, covering medical professional liability insurance for city nurses for the period August 3, 2012 through August 3, 2013, at an annual premium of $16,150.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 6, 2012, from the Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization for the tax collector to issue an appropriate duplicate tax sales certificate to Angela Salazar, covering the original tax sales certificate that is lost or otherwise misplaced for the premises commonly known and referred to as Lot 1785 in Block 13, as set out on the municipal tax act.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 6, 2012, from the Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization for the tax collector to issue an appropriate duplicate tax sales certificate to Angela Salazar, covering the original tax sales certificate that is lost or otherwise misplaced for the premises commonly known and referred to as Lot 1703 in Block 13, as set out on the municipal tax act.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 18, 2012, from the Chief Financial Officer advising that transfers for the 2012 state fiscal year municipal and sewer utility budgets may be necessary.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 18, 2012, from the Chief Financial Officer advising that temporary emergency appropriations for the 2013 state fiscal year municipal and sewer utility budgets may be necessary.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 13, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, is requesting authorization for the proper city officials to prepare and submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development a substantial amendment to the consolidated plan for CD 36 fiscal year 2010, specifically to reprogram $275,000 from the Elizabeth Development Company as follows: $126,050 for brand-new day to be used for soft costs for the Renaissance Apartments project located at 17175 First Street as part of the Elizabeth Court Rebootization Plan, and $148,950 for the Retail Skills Center of Jersey Gardens Mall, Elizabeth, to provide retail and customer service training and job placement for Elizabeth residents.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 13, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for his honor, the mayor, to sign any and all documents necessary and authorize the expenditure of such funds in connection with the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs State Neighborhood Stabilization Program grant award in the amount of $1.5 million.
Any comments? Put it on.
Has the project been identified?
Mr. Travis Hall, has the project been identified?
Yeah, I believe Mr. President has the second and third agenda.
Letter dated September 13, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute agreements to receive additional funding for direct rental assistance as required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Emergency Solutions Grant with the Salvation Army, Elizabeth, in the amount of $25,876.50, and with Elizabeth Coalition, Elizabeth, in the amount of $25,876.50.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 17, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for his honor, the mayor, to sign any and all documents necessary and authorize the expenditure of such funds in connection with the Union County Neighborhood Stabilization Program grant award in the amount of $850,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 17, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute a third-party agreement with New Jersey Community Development Group, Union, New Jersey, and authorize the expenditure of such funds pursuant to the terms of the grant agreement over the Spring Street Mixed Use Project, 46466, Spring Street, in the amount of $850,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 10, 2012, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against the properties listed on Schedule A attached here too and made apart hereof for the removal and disposal of debris from said properties in the amount of $7,378.7.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 12, 2012, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against the properties listed on Schedule A attached here too and made apart hereof for the boarding up of said properties in the amount of $1,594.80.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 14, 2012, from the Director of Public Works, requesting that City Council reject all bids received on September 5, 2012, for the repairs and maintenance of the plumbing systems at various public buildings owned by the city, and authorize the Director of Public Works to re-advertize for this project.
Any comments?
You don't have it? Oh, okay.
Letter dated September 14, 2012, from the Director of Public Works, requesting approval of Contract Amendment Number One final for the contract awarded to Joseph J. Golden and Sons, to provide construction management services in connection with the construction of the Elizabeth River Trail Phase One at an original cost of $116,610, to provide further for construction management services due to a delay in the South Broad Street project area being available for construction at an additional cost not to exceed $30,400, raising the contract amount to $147,010.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 17, 2012, from the Director of Public Works, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the New Jersey Department of Transportation Bike Way Grant Program. Anticipated funding will provide for the expansion of the Elizabeth River Trail project between Bridge Street and South Street by implementing Phase Two of the initiative in an amount not to exceed $1,500,000.
Any comments?
Sure, but put them on.
Yeah, good to see they're moving that phase to part of the trail. Yeah, it's going to be very nice actually. All right, put it on.
Letter dated September 17, 2012, from the Director of Public Works, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the New Jersey Department of Transportation Transit Village Grant Program for non-traditional transportation-related projects to continue the Elizabeth Avenue Streetscape Project, extending from Broad Street to Bridge Street in an amount not to exceed $750,000.
Any comments?
Yeah, put them on. Great for us. Another one for the sixth.
Okay. Put it on.
Letter dated September 17, 2012, from the Director of Public Works, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for fiscal year 2013 state aid to county and municipal entities. Funding under the New Jersey Department of Transportation Trust Fund Authority Act with anticipated funding, new traffic signals will be installed at the intersection of Elizabeth Avenue and Bridge Street and at the intersection of Elizabeth Avenue and Jefferson Avenue in an amount not to exceed $550,000.
Any comments?
What are we doing? We upgrading these two traffic lights?
Yes.
Good, put them on.
Too many things going in the six words.
The six words?
Kids are working out of school early.
I think he's doing lipstick.
Look, my nose is burning. Put it on.
Letter dated September 17, 2012, from the Director of Public Works, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the New Jersey Department of Transportation Safe Streets to Transit Program with anticipated funding will implement sidewalk curving, lighting, as well as green and aesthetic improvements on Morris Avenue from Phil Rizzuto Park to Irvington Avenue in an amount not to exceed $550,000.
Any comments?
Put them on.
I'm joking. I know.
Letter dated September 17, 2012, from the Director of Public Works, requesting approval of Contract Amendment Number One awarded to Birdsall Service Group to provide for environmental consulting engineering services remediation for a portion of property located at 630 Dow Avenue known as Sullivan Road at an original cost of $85,100, to provide further for additional remediation services performed at a portion of Sullivan Road at an additional cost not to exceed $68,510, raising the contract amount to $153,610.
Any comments?
Is it a recent contract? I mean, I thought it was only like a 20% or...
Just contract amendment.
But it's almost the same part of the original contract?
Yeah.
Can you look into that?
I can, sure. My understanding is that the work was under, was in the midst of being performed, and they encountered some additional hazards. Rather than come back and say, hey, City Council, can we award a contract to identify the hazards? They not only identified them, but remediated them as well, just in the interest of saving the...
Well, I thought you can only increase the contact, contract by about 20% or something.
Well, this is a professional service.
It's still a contract.
I'll look at that.
Thank you.
They're like unknown drums, huh? Who knows?
I mean, everybody can keep digging.
I don't know what the results were, but they can do that.
Everybody can keep digging and increase the contract to the point where...
They don't need to go more than 12 feet there.
All right. Put it on.
Letter dated August 23, 2012, from the Police Director, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, targeting violent crime initiative anticipated funds will be utilized for overtime salaries for the Narcotics Division to increase patrols within neighborhoods in an amount not to exceed $75,440.
Any comments?
President, can you relocate some of the money in the six words? I could get rid of some of my drug deals in the area.
Yeah, what's left over after we use it in the second one?
Wait a second. You gotta be somewhere out here, go share.
Councilman?
Is any of this money available for victims, like the victim's family?
Yeah, they could look to it.
I'll look into that, Councilman, I'm not certain.
Thank you.
Doesn't say anything, yeah.
Okay, any other comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 11, 2012, from the Police Director, requesting on behalf of Jersey Dairy Express, Pennsylvania Avenue, recommending the establishment of a loading zone along the east side of Pennsylvania Avenue, beginning 148 feet north of Whitehead Place and continuing 90 feet north thereof. Also, on behalf of Super Value Liquors, recommending to amend the resolution dated April 27, 2010, establishing a loading zone in front of 224 Broadway Avenue, specifically to extend the hour to 10 p.m.
Can I implement this on the cell? I need to look at something over there.
Yeah, I was gonna actually say the same thing.
Both?
Like, um...
No, the one for Pennsylvania. I don't know about the other one, no.
Someone physically see, like, if it's gonna impact.
Okay, so the amendment is okay, but Pennsylvania Avenue, you wanna hold? Because he's asking for two separate things.
I guess if it's...
The amendment's in, let's see, 224 Broadway Avenue. That's not yours, Mr. President. 224 Broadway Avenue.
Can you put that on all 224 Broadway Avenue, please?
No, that's, that's, that's Councilman Maza.
That's my word.
Okay, so both.
Mr. President, I do have a problem with this loading zone because now it seems to be that every store that have some kind of a connection or friendship with A, B, and C, I don't wanna mention different department or whatever, they all coming out now with a, with a loading zone. Who stops for, let's say, if there's a store for a loading zone? I have a travel agent, I like to have a loading zone to drop boxes and tickets, whatever. I mean, when do we say yes and where do we say no? I remember one area, we didn't, I didn't even approve, they say, put them on. I put on load, and the next day I saw the sign that we're not picking. Something is wrong, you know? Personally, I do not like the idea, only if it's necessary. I know where this liquor store is on Broadway Avenue. I remember when it used to be Master Pizza Pizzeria, he didn't have a loading zone at the time, and we didn't give it to him, and I was the largest now because, you know, you come in early in the morning, park your car on loading, that's it, then you go. Why you need a loading zone for the entire day? It doesn't make sense. Or if there is, loading zone only from 7:00 in the morning to 9:00, 9:00 in the morning. These people, these people have a loading zone all day. There's people that we give a loading zone, there's also driveway, five cars, cars, and you give a loading zone, and the neighbor, where do they have to park? You know, if it's a modern city that we are planning to park, actually, it's okay, but given our loading, all the respect to the Police Director, which I have a great admiration for Mr. Caswell, this actually needs to be studied further and be able to make the proper judgment. And who's better than the Councilman?
I'm assuming the traffic, that I have looked into it, but we will certainly hold it and we'll revisit it at the next conference.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, both of them, we'll hold them.
I just wanted to add how Councilwoman, Councilman Maza mentioned, that there's been time periods, I know that council members have experienced it, where signs have been placed up before we officially approved them. I know like myself, there was one time on Pennsylvania Avenue where like four parking spots in front of residential area was limited, and it didn't go through City Council first. And then, you know, when I brought it up, I called, I made a couple of phone calls, they removed them, and then, but I just want to make sure, you know, it just goes step by step. Just wanted to make sure.
You know, they're sending it to us, you know, with their recommendation and...
Mr. President...
Have your right to look into it and, you know, determine what you think is best.
I did also check with the law department as far as putting things out without Council approval, and it's a matter of unsubordination, subject to fight individual person, you know? So I would be very careful, you know, whoever's in charge of those department doing that, before they do, they have to have a certified resolution approved by City Council, go through the meeting, and then they could put the thing out, you know?
All right, well, we definitely will hold this up and...
Please, if you like, we'll check it out.
We visit them at the next conference meeting.
Letter dated September 13, 2012, from the Fire Director, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to amend the resolution in May 24, 2011, accepting the FEMA fiscal year 11 Port Security Grant Program for an amount not to exceed $1.5 million. FEMA fiscal year 11 Port Security Grant Program for an amount not to exceed $1,725,000 specifically to accept $817,228 in additional funds, raising the amount of the award to $2,542,228.
Any comments?
President, I think it's outstanding that we got additional money. It's really good for, for the city. You can fire your department, go ahead, go up the grant, you do, and do for success. Thank you.
Absolutely. We definitely need to protect our ports. Anything additional that we can receive, it'll be well used.
Okay.
Okay. Councilman Grove is requesting to amend Chapter 10, Point 16, Point 10 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled Weight Limit specifically to establish a four-ton weight limit on First Street between Elizabeth Avenue and Trumbull Street. And in doing so, this will exclude trucks over four tons from traveling on First Street.
But doesn't that go to traffic? Doesn't that go to traffic for review?
Well, he, well, his suggestion was to have the Law Department.
Oh, okay.
He wanted me to bring it up.
Yeah. It's usually, they go to traffic, that though.
What would you like us to look at, to review the request?
Well, that's, that was his instruction.
Has it gone to traffic as well?
No. His instruction was to pass it on to the law department. He wanted me to bring it up tonight.
Now, what is the...
She hasn't...
Yeah, four-ton weight. Okay. And also, he's requesting to relocate the bus stop located on the northwest corner of First Street and Magnolia Avenue, move back to the original location on southwest corner of First Street and Magnolia Avenue.
They're probably not in the ordinance, that's why.
So what, I'm sorry, Mr. President, so what are we doing with the second request?
The second request, he wants to move a bus stop back to the original location. I had sent a letter to New Jersey Transit, but that was back in March of this year and to date, nothing has been done. So I don't know whether it's because she may be waiting for a resolution from Council before they make that move.
No.
Police Department, Police Department used to assist him a little bit.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Yeah, I've had, I've had Police Department.
Bus stops are in the code.
Maybe put on a resolution.
Could they, could the Police Department ask?
Traffic? Traffic should involve both of us.
Just with Police Department.
Okay. Okay.
Because I've been successful with that, and the Police Department.
Councilman Goldman has requested handicap parking at 564 Jefferson Avenue. Letter dated September 11, 2012, from the Chairman of the Heritage Committee of the U.S. Chapter Unicod National requesting that City Council declare the month of October 2012 Italian-American Heritage Month. Flag-raising ceremony to be held on the front steps of City Hall Wednesday, October 10, 2012, at noon.
Any comments?
Councilman Mazz?
Put them on. Rocker request, we cannot say no, we have to go along with it. That's super. Rocker.
Yeah, right.
You have to see Rocky Marciano.
Letter dated September 13, 2012, from the City Treasurer submitting the Treasurer's report of receipts and dispersals for the month of July 2012 and state bank balances and investments as of July 31, 2012.
Any comments? Put it on.
All right, we'll do it once around, Councilwoman.
So happy to see him.
I would like to send a letter to our, to Senators and Congressman Abiel Series and also to Senator Renee Kean. I think she's on the Homeland, Homeland Security regarding this incident that took place down in Elizabethport where a young man was killed, Anthony Lamahomes. Now, they found his alleged shooter, but this person led to Egypt. And what's kinda really upsetting is that he left the country with an expired, on an expired brief passport, which is crazy. With all this Homeland Security, you can't even fly from here to Washington without them checking your underwear, taking off his hat, doing all this checking and here you have someone who can leave the country on an expired passport. So I would like to, you know, and my colleague here, he's joining me with this, Frank Queston, I hope the local colleagues can support this, that we do a resolution and making sure that our federal representatives receive it and see how we can help bring this person back to Italy so that he can face the charges that he levied against himself by allegedly, you know, shooting this young man. It's unreal. But we have all this non-land, all this anti-terrorism and someone can just get on the plane with an expired passport.
Somebody wasn't doing their job.
No, Mr. President.
Councilman?
May I bring up today, you could leave the country with an expired passport as long you live with a nationality that you belong to. Let's say, if I am an Italian, an American green card and a residence green card, I could go back to Italy with an expired passport. I have to use Alitalia. Alitalia employee will notify the FBI that such-and-such person left the country with that expired passport. That's the only company that you could live with and you could live the country regularly, no problem. Then when you come back, you're gonna have a hard time coming back because of whatever situation.
And if that is the case, then we need to change that because obviously if you're committing crimes and...
They don't know that you're committing.
That, well, I'm saying, if you, the holder of an expired passport who lives in Italy and you committed a crime, you can just hop on the plane and go back to Italy. So we need to change that. So we need to reach out more importantly, again, to get that law changed.
I don't do that.
Because that makes no sense.
Because, President, in this case, it appears that he was a suspect before he left. So, you know, if the FBI is involved and everyone is involved, you know, it should be a red flag. Well, this guy shouldn't leave the country.
And he left 10 days, I think, afterwards. So it wasn't like the next day, so a few days.
Somebody felt...
Amazing that this day and age, something like that didn't occur.
Yeah, it didn't occur. Right. Immediately, his name should have went out on the interval.
Right. That's it. That's who made a mistake. They don't send the paper out, everybody else is keeping it.
Yeah, good point. That's taken.
So we can just send this, I'm pretty sure.
I'll bring them back.
Anything else, Councilman?
Councilman?
Yeah, Mr. President, spoke to Lieutenant Dooley and we thought, you know, that he had been an ongoing subject, he'd been kicking around, you know, the noon clock from 9 to, what is it, 9 to 10 or whatever it is, in the morning and then 4 to 6 in the afternoon?
No, 7 to 9.
It's 7 to 9, yeah, that's right, 7 to 9. I forget that. 7 to 9, here's the one, 7 to 9 and 4 to 6 in the afternoon and different location. I was under the impression that all its city council members that was involved had not submitted their requests to him, but he said, no. He, he said to me, he said, "Councilman, whatever you guys are okay with, we have approved and we're okay with it, he's okay with it." So I don't, I know I turned my list in to him, I think he did too, didn't he?
I didn't have any.
You didn't have anything?
No.
You did. You turned yours in?
And Joe?
I, I didn't have any.
I did. I turned it to the former president and to Mr. Berg.
Right. So what he said, if we're okay with what we have submitted to him and we're okay with it, he said, he's okay. So what I'm saying to you is...
Are we sure what he has is what you each want at this point? Because some time has gone by.
Would you want me to ask him to read, submit everything?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to make sure.
I think the Law Department has.
I don't think so.
No.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this, the thing that we had with T and M was something different.
Yeah, that's just in front of school.
Right.
Oh, no, we're not.
That's the, that's the...
No.
That's not the same one.
Yeah, but it's been a long time.
It's been a while, yeah. But I wanna see if we can close that chapter.
That, that one was around the same time as that.
Right, but that's different. We're talking about around school.
That's the one I'm still waiting for.
That's the one that we were talking about changing the distance from the stop sign.
From the stop sign, crosswalks.
And you got, right, that's different.
Yeah, I'm hopeful that by next meeting, we'll have something.
Councilor Travis, there's an internal meeting at the end of this week, I believe, to discuss that very same issue. So hopefully we'll have a recommendation by next pre-council.
Right, so I'm asking you, do you want me to, you got, that got?
Yes, I think that would be good.
And ask him to just fall back into us, whatever he submitted to him and we review it real quickly again?
Yeah, absolutely.
And say, okay, yes, this is what we submitted, we're okay with it, and we move on. Is that fair enough?
Because some residents are still...
Right. We just wanna make sure. You sure? Okay, fine. And then, and then we can go, so we can close that chapter. And then maybe by that time, maybe get something from the law department, on the other.
Travis, I just informed me that.
Exactly. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Next conference meeting, we should have something.
Okay, all right. Because I'm interested in that also. We should, the dislo...
Well, we'll have both of them.
Yeah, we'll have both. Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. That's it, Councilman?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanna follow up on, on that. The issue was that Traffic Division didn't feel that they should draft the ordinance. So this was a two-part process that the Traffic Division was going to compile the list, review the list, and then at some point, as we got to final list, the Law Department would be drafting the ordinance.
That's what I thought was happening.
Yeah, that's what we sort of agree.
Well, we need to give them a complete list so that...
Once we reviewed it.
So they had, like, a year and a half from now.
Yeah. Well, Ray, Ray should have had something on.
And that's what I'm thinking.
Ray was involved.
I'm just saying, it had to be, come up, you know, yeah, we need to move forward.
Sure.
Thank you, that's all.
Well, you were correct.
Hopefully by our next conference meeting.
Because we had that supportatory and all that crap. That's about the big fight.
Okay, we can't forget that.
What else?
Councilman Mazz?
Yeah, I would like to get a copy of, from the Traffic Division about the truck route that we have in the City of Elizabeth. Where are the trucks supposed to be going and where are nuts supposed to be going? One time, I remember when I was a lodger, we used to get a copy of what it looks like, truck route, because I know one street that was never approved to be a truck route. Constantly, we have, you know, not until 100, but in the 20, 30s per week, you know, trailers and whatever, and many people's homes, they're shaking, you know, like a earthquake. I would like to see if you get a copy and then I would like to make some comments and suggestions probably because what's the sense of what Councilman Many Grove is doing by saying anything about foot tons if the proper agency does not enforce, you know. I could tell you, 4th Avenue, 3rd Avenue, 2nd Avenue, they are lightweight, you know, and we get those huge trailers.
It's difficult.
And sometime, there might be a special police on duty and you see a guy goes by, it's okay, we wait for him. Probably got lost, that's the excuse, but you know, you get lost, he's like...
Is there something about this or that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, if the Council is a whole, because I get those incidents all the time with these oversized trucks coming to label.
I wouldn't mind having a copy as well, so I will share it with all Council, okay, Council on this.
But anything else, Councilman? The bad thing is the enforcement, that's the best thing.
That's always the issue.
Yeah, that's always the issue, that enforcement, having a piece off of someone that can enforce. We have signs there, which is legal, but having someone that enforce that, that's where...
What about the ticket people? They give tickets on cars. Can they enforce that?
It's tough, Pat.
The meter maids?
Yeah, they can just give a ticket.
It's tough.
You need a strong police office to see those big truck drivers, you know. They might run over that little bicycle in a little accident.
And then, and then it goes from being a...
I know, I know. That's why there's a third to defend them. Mr. President?
Yes, anything?
I'm still on the floor, if you don't mind. I would like to request a Police Department or Traffic to put a, a, whatever you call crossing guard that Williams and Nordwood Terrace especially might be able to reinforce with a police, what do you call it, radar and speeding, you know. That corner's terrible. People actually flying in both direction, coming from your warden to my warden, make a right and turn into Nordwood Terrace, flying. But they're coming from homecoming, I mean, from the ice cream place down the corner. Might you find they make a left and turn into Nordwood? Williams. Williams.
Williams is right, okay.
Did I say Williams?
Yeah, you said Williams.
What do you want from an Italian? You say Williams, the same thing.
You got too much happening in your war, that's the problem.
Thank you, I know, I know. But anyway, I have received numerous complaints from parents and residents. If we could do that, we'd be greatly appreciated, even though it's a requirement by the school to have a crossing guard or a police on duty within the hours A, B, and C, you know, lunchtime, early and late in the afternoon. That would definitely deter some people. We or she will get familiarized with those cars are speeding. If Mr. Mazzis be it, go after Mr. Mazzis. It's your Chevy, Mr. President, you should go after your Chevy, all right?
Well, I, I do know they do have some difficulty identifying people that are willing to work those shifts and crossing guards, but we'll, we'll send something to them to see if they can accommodate that.
Thank you. That's it.
That's it. Okay. Councilman, question?
Yes, Mr. President. This is my last opportunity to invite everyone...
Thank you.
To the Ciclovia, which will take place next Sunday between 9:00 and 11:30. Just to refresh everyone's memory, if you'd like to ride a bike, if you like to dance, all kinds of dances, if you like to play volleyball, you'll have that opportunity.
What day is it?
Sunday, the 23rd, between 9:00 and 11:30, starting at the corner of Westfield Avenue and Morris Avenue. So I hope that we'll cooperate and I hope we can have this activity. If it's successful, then hopefully we'll continue it in the future in other parts of the city. Thank you.
And thank you for your support with that.
Councilman's name?
I actually have a couple items. The first one is, just wanna make my colleagues aware, just in case they didn't hear, but on Sunday night, there was an issue in Oakwood Plaza where in 220 Building, there was a pipe that was broken and water was gushing from the fifth floor all the way down until the ground floor. I mean, the fifth floor hallway was like two or three inches deep of water going into the apartments, going down into the different, all the apartments underneath, even to the point, going inside the electrical panels inside. So it was, it was a big emergency that happened when it came to that. And the Fire Department was there, the police was there. I arrived and just wanna make everyone aware, the greatest frustration was that we couldn't get in contact with anyone from the management. It was 10:30 at, around 10:30 at night and I know the person, the employee that was working, he had the cell phone, I was standing right next to him, he had all the numbers and no one was picking up. And even myself, I made a couple of phone calls, I followed the procedure. They even have a number, like in case of emergency, leave and will return up to this moment. If it wasn't because I followed up, I would have never received the phone call, even myself, back. So it was a big situation from the standpoint that the Fire Department even said, in the 220 Building, everyone that was in the A apartment, so let's say 5A, 4A, 3A, they even said that, like, they're not gonna be able to sleep there just because the water going into electrical panels, emergency. And we couldn't get in contact with anyone. I personally even thank Pastor there, Reverend there, just because I even went to his house, feel like there's possibly, we might have to relocate these families because of situation. But it's, it's a really big frustration, disappointment, that there was no one to get in contact, like, you know, in a situation like that.
Have you heard from management since?
Since then? Thank you for bringing that up. They did, I followed up just to make sure the families were taken care of. Supposedly, they remedied everything. But they, their position is that, like, you know, like, the person had all the telephone numbers and they didn't receive any phone calls. And I, and I told them, I was like, well, I was standing right next to the employee and he was going through the numbers calling and had it on speaker and I was just hearing the phone ringing, going to voicemail. So it was, so their position is, well, they didn't know, they didn't get notified by the Fire Department. But when we're inside an apartment with a fire official and then the policeman and the fireman is saying, you can't stay. So it was really frustrating, disappointing, and a lot of the residents were reaching out. I'm actually surprised that even tonight, some of them didn't come by. I'm pretty sure probably next week they will. But it was something affecting all the floors and it was a big thing.
Well, I'm glad to hear at least that it was...
Did you call the mayor?
Well, the mayor, I know that they reached out some too, yeah.
Well, I know they, it happened twice on that day. Well, I know they, it happened twice on that day, the water gushing, and I think the second time, when you were there, I think they said if it would happen one other time, they would probably would have prevented, because the first time, they tried to fix it, they did, and then the second time, it happened again. So I think I went over there around 11:00 PM at night, making sure that everything was peaceful and quiet, and it was, but the people, they were, they were not upset about what happened, I think they were really upset about the fact that management didn't respond when we have an employee on duty, they call it and no one responded. I think that, I think that's getting more frustrating than the situation, that there's no response.
So with Councilman Keita?
Yeah, I, I think that any operator of units over X number need to have their contact information on file with some agency in the city. Number two, they need to be reachable, and if they're not, because the health and safety of the residents is at stake here, if they're not reachable, maybe they need to be fine. So I would, you know, if you're interested, I'd be interested in requesting that the law department get together with the relevant departments, would be the Health Department, Housing, and
If I may, before you do that, just so you know, I am requesting from the administration that they have those directors come to one of our meetings, so we can ask them about their involvement, their staff's involvement with Oakwood Plaza, and what's going on there.
Right.
I think we deserve to hear from them.
Absolutely.
You know, what they're doing to try to help remedy the situation.
If I could just complete that thought, one other quick thought. So, Mr. President, I would ask you to direct the law department to look into the possibility of an ordinance, so that this doesn't happen again. Somebody could have been seriously injured that night, and if they were, there's nobody in a position of responsibility to get a hold of.
We can research it, yeah.
Yeah, but I, I think, thank you very much for having the relevant directors come, because they are the more
Administration to do that, yeah.
Relevant person to be here. We're not, we're not building inspectors, but we're not health officers. So they need to be here, and thank you very much.
Councilman question?
Yes, Mr. President, the steps that you have taken, and I agree with my colleagues who one day I said, is definitely not acceptable, you know, management's behavior in such a situation. I was happy with the presentation, I was optimistic about the future, but when something like this happens, we expect management to take action, and if they do not, there should be some consequences.
Definitely.
That's just my opinion. I don't know what the consequences may be, I know it's not an, there are no easy solutions, but there should be some consequences, when something like this happens, and then respond.
You're right, very good, Councilman.
Councilman Mazz?
Yeah, Mr. President, in a situation like this, that's why we have the relocation department, we have, I think, that Reverend Radear is still in charge, and the Board of Health Department, the director of the Board of Health and Relocation, that would be the two major agencies that are in a situation like this, the Board of Health Director will make the decision, say, okay, they have to move, Reverend Radear will relocate it to the next, either motel or motel, and then you build a company that is supposed to taking care of those people. That's the most civilized way to do things around the world, I don't know why they can do this in Elizabeth. You have to notify them, they're responsible.
I'm happy to hear that the councilman was able to reach Reverend Radear, and that was And we were, we were on standby in case we had a recess, or even the red cross, but it's just, it was so frustrating going through that without management involved, it's like, it's their building.
So Councilman Mazz, it is also right, I think, to meet a director of Health and Senior Services should have also been involved in that.
Absolutely.
You know, not just
Many years ago, when I was a large, I used to call Sir May, Sir May, tap, tap, boom, Councilman, we move him to, let's say, the Saxon Motel, whatever hotel those days existed, that's emergency, that's a relocation, five days, six days, whatever money, the city pay, and then you go after the landlord, you go after the people, that's the purpose of having the Board of Health, you know, director.
Yes, anything else, Councilman?
Yeah, just two quick things. One, I know that there's certain houses that have illegal driveways, but they inherited them when they bought it, like, you know, they've been there forever, I just want to know what happens in a situation like that. Like, you know, it isn't like they created the illegal driveway. Like, um
They don't fit the 10-foot requirement in width, and that sort of thing?
They did go through the regular procedures to get it
Or front yard parking?
Yeah, front yard. But it's like, for example, like, I, there's certain houses where they had one, like, they've owned the house for over 15, 20 years, and when they bought it, it was just like that. I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, I know, I've had, you know, I've had situations where someone created an illegal driveway, sold the house to the next person, and then they learned that it was an illegal driveway, they couldn't use it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They cannot use it, because it's not legal.
Right.
Does it matter, you know, if they
Bought the house as it is.
It's not legal, they can't use it.
Okay. And last, well, the other thing I wanted to mention, how many units in an apartment building, this doesn't have to do with Oakwood, the different building, is the minimum where they need to have, like, a super full-time living in the building?
I don't know what I can
Okay, and I just want to make sure it's someone that stays, because I'm hearing rumor